This conference will now be recorded.
Is he doing something else before?
He didn't say that.
Which one? Air factual phone? Maybe would you like to download it? Coffee? Hot coffee? Did you want?
Yeah.
Good morning. Are we on? It's great. Happy New Year, everyone. Everybody might be watching on Facebook. We're from Swearingen County, our new city council. Our city clerk. So we wanted to show up and make the way to get started. Start out with, uh, our city clerk, Courtney.
Hi, I'm Robin Hefner. I solemnly swear. I support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Arkansas. Now faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the office of for what you want to end it.
Next up, Ms. Romo.
Ms. Romo, please. Yes, many eyes, you know, are actually going to solemn swear to be solemn swear of supporting the Constitution of the United States and supporting the Constitution of the United States. I say to say about the Constitution itself. Uh, so this is the, our regular, the charge in the office of Board City Council. This is, uh, the office of Board City Council. The Office of Board City Council. This is the public.
Where?
Please, that is one class. I vaguely, I basically solemn swear to be solemn swear to be solemn swear of supporting the Constitution of the United States and supporting the Constitution of the United States. I say about the office of Board City Council. Uh, so this is the charge. This is the charge in the office of Board City Council. The Board City Council, Board City Council. Of course, of course. I'm saying that. I am Robert. I solemn swear, I solemn swear to be solemn swear of supporting the Constitution of the United States. I say to say about the Constitution of the State of Arkansas. I think of, of faith with the circumstances, all of it. Board City Council. The Board City Council, Board City. Board City, Board City. The public. The public.
I'm Robin Hefner. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Board City Council, Board Chief, commissioned to. Upon which I am a bachelor.
I, I'm a chef. I solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Arkansas. Will faithfully discharge the duties. The Board City Council, Board City, positions. Upon which I will back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all. We got a celebration. I've been lovely. I've worked as part of board. I think the governance of boards, starting with, so, uh, city council, uh, sort of, uh, certainly all about the market on terms of the, uh, sector. It's passing by, yeah, I hope to get them, uh, I believe well, and I was twenty twenty odd, they believe.
Thank you.
Can everybody out there? I'm happy.
I have one thing to find.
No, it's council members. Just kind of line up and, you know, line up. We better take each other's lines later. Sure, Santa Claus. Can you get it off?
Okay. Six feet. How would you do this?
No, we're not. We're in a bathtub. Now, if you have council members to take your positions, we'll go ahead and get into our special meeting. Well, very good, council. Welcome. Happy New Year again. Yes, make sure your mics are on. Leave yours on, please. As best as is. To, um, begin this meeting. Ms. Clark, would you read that? Would you call real, please?
Councilmember Romo. Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Harbord. Councilmember Hefner. Here. Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
And Councilmember Shetron.
Here.
We have a quorum. Very good. Ms. Holbrook, would you lead us in prayer, please? I'll lead us in prayer. All right. The Lord has come for us this morning. We give thanks for this year that we're about to embark. We ask your blessings over this, this council to do the city's business. And we actually say so. We pray it does sustain. Amen.
Amen.
For the flagellates.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, a one nation, a unified with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. As this is a, uh, the first meeting of the new council, special council, special meeting, the agenda is limited to what is on what we're meeting about. But to begin with, I'd like for each of you to, uh, go around and introduce yourselves. Who you are, where you're from, family, whatever you want us to know. So, Ms. Romo, we'll start with you.
My name is Steve Romo. I live here in the ward seventeen, born on seventeen years. Married in the west. Nicky Romo. The three children, Sarah, Bailey, and Nathan.
Very good. Welcome aboard. Ms. Ware?
Yes, I'm being ware. I've lived here, I think, since two thousand seven. Been on the council for a few years. Yes, I enjoy it. It's been some challenge. My, uh, lady friend. Buttered my shirt and a very happy cheese here. Built his office.
Very good.
I'm Eric Harbord. I moved here in two thousand nine after I retired from the Air Force. I have one wife, Carolyn, and one son, Michael. And I'm just happy to be, I hope I can do good for the city.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm Courtney Rubel. I have my husband, Rob, and we have five children together. And I've served as a city clerk the last two years and look forward to continuing to serve.
Very good. Ms. Shepherd?
My name is Robin Hefner. I live here in thousand four.
All right. Jordan Fleet. Very good.
My name is Jim McMahon. I've lived here for almost eighteen years. Married to my wife Stacy. Have three kids, a grandson, got another one coming. Decided, uh, just happy to be here.
Very good.
Hi, I am, uh, Monja Shetron. I've been living alone since two thousand seventeen. So I'm fairly new to work. I'm married. Um, my husband is alive. So I spend a lot of time here with time on my hands. So, uh, the more I learned about the city, the more I wanted to get involved.
Very good.
And I'm Eric Gastelot. Second year of a four-year term, and I'm excited to be here. And I look forward to working with this council to help do what we need to do for the city.
We're, you know, we're on Facebook Live. Next up on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-one zero one. I would entertain a motion to put it on its first reading. Motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Read it, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twenty twenty dash one and ordinance twenty twenty dash five and ordinance twenty twenty dash six. Establishing the rules and procedures to be used by the Ward City Council declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Very good. I'll open the floor for discussion. As a matter of clarification, this is an ordinance that we do every year. Close to it every year to set the, uh, rules on how we do business in this, in this council. In your package, you got the, uh, attachment one had, uh, the inclusion of ordinance oh five and oh six into there. There was some wordsmithing also in the, in the attachment that I suggested. And I open the floor up for any other comments.
I would like to see section eight spread.
Let me get to that. Section eight was a section I added from, uh, the employee's handbook. It would have the elected officials and appointed officials as a governing body. The mayor and the city clerk would be asked to read and sign the city's social media policy, which is contained in the city ward and boy's handbook attached to. Signed the policy except for acknowledgement of the policy as elected and appointed members are not subject to disciplinary actions outlined in the policy. We have a motion to strike that. Do we have a second? We have a second. Open for discussion. My question is, why would you want to strike that?
Because I was, uh, elected by the people that don't work for the city.
Okay.
I don't, the city should tell me what I can and cannot say on social media.
Oh, the people of the city. Well, that's what she's saying.
Now, I'm talking about the city as a entity, the city of Ward.
The government. Not the citizens.
Any other discussion?
I'm in agreement with Robin. I, I think that it's our constitutional right, First Amendment, that I can say what I want to say on Facebook. Now, I can't go divulge if we have like a special meeting, a special council. I can't divulge that because I'm bound by law. But otherwise, we have laws that dictate the First Amendment allows me to say what I'd like to say. You know, there's, I feel there's a rule in place to prevent it from saying confidential and other things that we're not allowed to discuss. Any other business, I don't see a purpose for why we want to limit that.
Did you read the attachment?
I did.
Right. But you think so employees have to abide by social media policy? And by the way, this is, uh, strongly enforced or strongly suggested by the school league, uh, for employees and elected officials also.
It suggests? I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
It's suggested as far as we shouldn't talk about city council.
Right.
Well, I mean, they said something like that, and then I kind of.
Well, it's just the knowledge of reading, and it's actually just knowledge of reading this, the attachment to, the understanding it. There is no disciplinary actions that can be taken against the city council member in that respect.
But city employees can be disciplinary actions.
That's right. Yes.
So we rise above what the city employees did?
You, you, uh, we have no disciplinary action we can take upon an elected official.
Right. But I'm, what I'm saying is, so you're distinguishing between city elected officials and then employees. So do as I say, not as I do.
That's, that's my point, too. Is by, by, you're saying you don't want them to sign this policy. You're kind of saying to the employees.
Well, why do we have it as employees would be my question.
Oh, you must have a social media policy anymore. The way that social media is today, yes, it highly recommends you have social media policy. And it's in the handbook. It was approved last year, or year for us. Any other discussion? No, no, no. No. Even if you read the attachment, it talks about personal use, personal use of, of social media. Ms. Cliff, do you have any input on this? Since you're still sitting here, from an attorney standpoint?
Just now, uh, listed. I, I mean, I just want to clarify. Y'all, even you say you don't work for the city. I certainly pay for the fact that you're the position to represent, uh, the people that have put you here. And you, that you see business. You, you are, you are the city. So do as I say, not as I. What you, you're telling the employees what you've done through the handbook, the history on there, that they have all this, but I doubt. I guess in my perspective, that would be. I might be less happy if I'm, if I'm the employee that, that I've been entrusted with some of these cities because, hey, I can do this. But don't, y'all worry about me. I can be very well known. The other, the other, I think we all, I don't know. I, I don't know what a personal experience anybody's had with the social media in this realm or anything. But, uh, I mean, it's, it's not really any of this. So you have a few little situations where you all ask to be representative of the city with that as a duty to, um, you have to ask differently than we would if we weren't. Your neighbors can be where they want, but you need to be where. You put yourself asked for and are elected with this, that, or this. Their sacrifice may have, you know, but it's more exposure or less ability to speak behind the scenes. Just to prepare for helping to study the bond and trust it to do what you've done. And unfortunately, I don't like to do. I'll say what I want. Moral issue. Speaking issue of what I chose to ask for and he chose to do. He was conditioned, I know, which is trying to myself, make the betterment of the city, the county. The betterment of the position. You know, also keep in mind that what you're doing is not personally that by both the understanding that I can do, it's a position. It's for accounts. It's for, same apply. I love to say what I want, but we say that. They don't say it. Same to get your. What you're doing is shooting the policy for the position, not putting it inside. Yeah, I don't know background in this, but I mean, I can't imagine. This is a common thing going around. I believe that that's a determined year for a long time. So certainly be involved in how, uh, council works, you know, how cities work, small cities particularly have other lives in the political, legal, affection, affection, which they have there. The guidance that they all can't get. They're suggesting it's not true. They don't do it without reasoning. They don't do it without kinds of drafts, not properly written, without. I mean, for any particular questions, I, I mean, it's not, my view on it's not. Again, it's maybe in a different perspective. I don't see it as a limitation to Jimmy's ability to, to be on Facebook post-batteries. Or it's an honest ability to tweet about what happened at dinner or anything. But, you know, y'all just do this. You can't, you can't have that situation. And, you know, to take a step further with this, to say that you can't do something inflammatory, I don't think that's asking for a lot of, uh, drawback for opinions.
I guess to me, my point is just not the city council. I guess I have a heartburn with the employees also. I guess that's where I'm going with, you know, do as I say, you know, you know, that's another thing I think.
Yeah, that's a difference. Now, that's a different topic for discussion.
Right.
But there's. I would caution. Would offer extreme caution to eliminate that.
Would offer extreme caution to eliminate that, for, you have a front of employees, or people that are subject to this handbook, that have access to information, not all of these. And. They represent, they go out, they don't have a city award on their chest, their shirts, or, you know, you do not want them to have unlimited access to social media to say whatever is on their mind. We all have. I know, from judge's perspective, we all have kinds of extreme emotions, but maybe we lash out, maybe we say things in the heat of the moment, you know. We really would regret saying. If that is allowed, and there is absolute no disciplinary measure which to address that. That's a, that's a disaster, I, I can't imagine being mayor, I can't imagine, maybe once a month, having to deal with, hey, you know, your dear reader put on Facebook something they saw in the window of a house or something, you know, there's just, there's too much that's available, and it can be simulated easily, to just not have those guidelines. It's just, it'd be a dangerous prospect in my mind. If, like, the decision to speak, you have to answer to all of that, but you do need to be able to have such a committee in place, and those, these are causes that you all approve, and there are certain needs for the council. You. Pretty, but it does have to be.
Thank you, Judge, I appreciate it. The issue at hand is whether to strike section eight or not, there has been a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Come on up and identify yourself.
I'm Jamie Weir, I'm the administrative assistant for the city, and as we've pointed out, there are things that some people see that should not be put on social media. I am the social media director for the city as well. I can follow certain things and see certain things that are on Facebook, that should not be on, that should not be on this, especially if you are a leader for our city. You need to be appropriate, the things that you say, you know. Hey, I have grandkids, I agree with that, but to cuss or to be hateful or certain things like that, just by us, we don't need to be like that. You know, everybody has an opinion, we all have an opinion, but as an employee of the city, I respect my city. I respect the people that live here, I love the people that live here, and I respect all of you. And that's just how I should feel like, I should feel about this as well.
Thank you.
I'm Stacy McMan, and I'm really just, I want to say something on this, just as, I have a business here in Ward, and we have a lot of employees, a lot of young employees, and we have the same thing, we have a social media directive in our handbook, and it's important because, like she said, and like Clint said, things that's said have a context, and it is reflected on our business, and it can certainly hurt our business, and it can make people feel uncomfortable. Not seeing it come into our business for things like that. There are definitely things that get said on social media about our city, and it's really hard sometimes to overcome the opinions, because we don't have a high standard sometimes of things that are said. And so, as the city council and as the city, that is very important for them to have that high standard, to make sure that they're, they aren't, that they aren't saying things that are inappropriate, that are not making people feel uncomfortable, making people that they can't come in and talk to, but, and tell you what problems that they have and what concerns they have. And I believe that that's what happens, and that, and those are stuff like that, so it's, it sounds like it's insulting, but it's really not, it is asking you to sit at the very highest you could and be respectful and open, and not automatically cast judgment, not automatically cast your opinion, because you're not going to get an honest opinion, if people know where you stand already, they're not going to come to you and talk to you about it. And that's just my opinion as someone who lives here in the community, and I've lived here longer than all of y'all, so I'm just telling you that that's, you know, there's this whole thing of like, new people here and old people here that have been here forever, and I really want the city to be successful, and for it to be successful, we've got to start up in our game, we've got to start being at a level that people feel comfortable coming to you, and you're not going to be like, going back and forth with different things on social media, that really encapsulates a very small amount of people. There's a lot of people who don't go on social media that have been there for a long time. That's what I'm being.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, too.
Yes.
I think, honestly, if we expect our employees to hold a certain standard, to be back and look at a certain profession, we need to be professional. It's not do as I do, we should be setting it for them, you know, the interest in my social life, for me, but as far as public, if you have a problem, you handle it, but you don't show your problems down to that, or you bring them up where they're at. It's again, all business, I mean, we have this in the policy, my handbook, for a long time. Needs to be that for you.
Thank you, any other comments? Very none, again, on the floor is a motion to strike, and a second to strike section eight, social media policy. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Romo.
Here.
I need, I need a yes or no, wait.
Councilmember Weir.
No.
Councilmember Harbord.
No.
Councilmember Hefner.
This is to strike it, yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
No.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Section eight will remain in the attachment. I would entertain a motion to put, or to suspend the rules. Putting ordinance twenty, what is? Yeah, thank you, twenty twenty oh one, twenty one oh one, suspend the rules for its second and third reading. There are motions, wait a second. Roll call, please, suspend the rules.
Councilmember Weir.
No. I just, I just. First, I didn't think we should.
This is the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
No.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Motion carries, suspend the rules, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two-one zero-one. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
No.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
No.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
And Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Motion carries, I entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause, making this, this ordinance effective immediately.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
What am I voting on again?
The emergency clause.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
No.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Weir.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Motion carries forty-two. Emergency clause is enacted, this is effective immediately. Next up on the agenda, we have two.
Can I just make the point that there is in your packet the conflict of interest policy, which was already previously loaded on to have all the council members sign, and there's also a copy of the social media policy, if you guys will please sign those and give those to me at the meeting.
Thank you. In your packet also is a listing of state holidays, I noticed that there was the next two meetings, this month and next month, fall on holidays. We can meet on a holiday, we have done so in the past, and that's fine, but I started opening it up, if you guys want to change it to the following Tuesday or next day, it's fine, and it was, we just leave it as it is, and that's fine, too. So, open the floor for discussion.
Leave it as is.
You make that a motion?
Push me, please.
A motion to leave the calendar as is, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McMahon.
Yes.
Councilmember Shetron.
Yes.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember.
Yes.
Councilmember Harbord.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Motion carries, the meetings will happen as planned. That is all on our agenda for today. Yes. Now, it's a necessary council meeting is January eighteenth, six-thirty, and planning a meeting, meeting is January twenty-fifth at seven P M. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say a tie. Very good, again, thank you for attending, see you on the eighteenth, thank you everybody again.